Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council January 20th, 2015 meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. We'd also like to remind you to turn off any electronic devices that you may have. This time we'd call on Councilmember Primera Protem Silo Focet for tonight's invocation, but before we get started, I'd like to remind, we lost a good friend last week. Mr. Van Potique, who usually comes to all of our council meetings, is very loyal to the city of Burlington, died on Sunday, January 11th, 2015 after a brief illness. He was educated in the Burlington City Schools, graduated from Walter Williams High School in 1967, and he was also a Commissioner on the Burlington Housing Authority. So I'd like you to remember him as we have our invocation.
The bow and head is in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
This time we'd like to recognize Boy Scout Troop 17 and Scoutmaster Hal Bates. Thank you guys for being here, and I'll tell you what we're gonna do. We're gonna give you the opportunity to present yourself to us, so we'll start with you, young man, in the Nike sweatshirt. Me your last name, William.
William Beck.
Thank you.
I'm Harrison Jordan.
I'm Patrick Nadalski.
I'm Ben Nick.
Joel Easter.
William Watt.
Anthony Cobble.
Evan Breelof.
I'm Greg Ross.
I'm Nicholas Smith.
I'm Jackson Williams.
I'm Matthew Ray.
I'm Turner Leaky.
Alice Hawks.
Church Lamenda.
I'm Hal Bates, scout master.
Chad Cobble, assistant scoutmaster.
John Maynard, assistant.
Thank you guys for being here. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. January 5th, 2015 work session. January 6th, 2015, city-county meeting. Got a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Code of Ethics. This time we'd recognize City Clerk Renee Ward. Ms. Ward.
Ms. of Council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. This time I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Adoption of the agenda.
We'll adopt the agenda.
Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to approve waiving bulk collection fees for the period of Monday, March 2nd, 2015 through Friday, May 1st, 2015. B, to reappoint Michael Graves to the Housing Authority to fulfill the unexpired term of Reverend Dre Bland, expiring on June 30th, 2013. C, Budget Amendment 2015-48, police donation is spelled out in your agenda.
Make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Two, City Council will consider adopting an ordinance creating and leveling a levying a municipal vehicle tax for public transportation in the city of Burlington pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 20-97C. This time I'd recognize Mr. Charles Bateman. Mr. Bateman.
Mayor, this is a matter that was continued from your December, middle of December meeting. At that time, it was explained that the proposal was to levy a $5 motor vehicle tax specifically earmarked for public transportation. At the request of a member of council, that matter was carried over to tonight. It is before you, it has had a public hearing at the last meeting. If adopted, proceeds could only be used for public transportation, specifically earmarked by statute. One of the key important features of the transportation direct vehicle taxes is that if you adopt it first, then there's no question that it can be used in addition to other funds. If you fund it from the general fund and then later adopt the municipal vehicle tax specifically earmarked for transportation, then it has to be additional funding. It cannot replace general fund funding, so that's an important distinction to carry in mind. I think the city manager did some research or had some research prepared which indicated the number of cities throughout the state who have earmarked vehicle taxes for public transportation. I think he may have shared that list with you, but most major cities do it, other than those cities which have electric revenues or other forms of revenue. We're available to answer any questions the staff and I, if you might have about the tax or how it will be implemented or who would be affected.
Questions or comments to Mr. Bateman.
Mr. Mayor, I'm still, you know, the information, I asked Mr. Owen this morning, and he's provided information, and I still have some, you know, questions I'm trying to get resolved, and I would ask the council to delay this until the first meeting in March. I know the first meeting in February is gonna be pretty well loaded. By that time, I should have my questions answered and have a pretty good fix, you know, but there are some questions I still need to get resolved in my own mind, and I would so moved that it be, you know, delayed until that time, so.
Again, what was the timeline?
Yeah, until the first meeting in March. I'd like to have, if we could, an intervening work sessions, which would be the first meeting in March, you know, so if there's any further discussion or question, we can get them resolved, you know, before the formal meeting, so.
Ms. Ward, what is the date of that work session? Is that March 1st? March 2nd is the work session? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor.
Just for clarity purposes, is there any action that's gotta be taken on behalf of the Federal Transit Authority that would require any expenditures from the general fund between now and then?
Not that I know of, Mr. Butler. We're still in the process of working with the federal government, and we have had some clarification with the state government, but I don't think by that time. Much of it will depend on the type of vehicles that you choose to, to order in terms of the length of time it takes to get those vehicles in, but I would not say by March would be an issue.
I too would like to see this delayed a little bit. I too have questions about what we're gonna do, and like to look at some of the routes again. I don't think that I'm ready to vote on this today, and I'd like to see it carried over. If Councilman Ward made that a motion, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's been scheduled to receive citizens' comments on area housing and neighborhood improvement needs to develop the 2015-2020 five-year consolidation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. This time we'd recognize Shaunery Tillery. Welcome, Ms. Tillery.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. The city is in the process of developing our five-year plan. We're in the beginning stages of doing that. That will continue out the use of our CDBG and home funds over the next five years, and as part of that public participation process, we're required to do a public hearing. Earlier tonight, we held a public meeting and got citizens' comments with that at North Park for the plan as well, so that we were, did a community forum as well. So it's just a public hearing to receive comments on how we're gonna develop that plan going forward.
Comments from Ms. Tillery before we begin the public hearing?
Can you give us some idea of what you heard in that meeting?
Yeah, we'll be doing an actual summary that will be sent out to council members, but a lot of it had to do with the issue of homelessness, the non-availability of affordable housing in Burlington. Particularly, there was a focus on transitional housing and the need of having transitional housing as opposed to just a homeless facility. That has been a change from the federal government's perspective, and they no longer fund transitional housing. It's supportive housing that they are funding now. There was a lot of disconnect between services available in East Burlington, I mean, in West Burlington as opposed to East Burlington, the issue of no transportation. Some code enforcement issues were brought up, and again, like I said, those will all be summarized into a list that will be given to council over the next two weeks.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Mayor and council members, I'm M.J. Wilkerson. I'm the Director of Alamance County Public Library, and we fund the resources for North Park Library through the CDBG grant, and I cannot thank you enough for your support in allowing us to do that. We are really focusing our efforts on North Park this year with the new, we got new carpet, new paint, and a new ceiling, which we hadn't planned on getting but was a very nice gift for us, and once we reopened, we've really pushed some programming there, and we've started having some folks attend some of our programs. I know we've got an upcoming marionette workshop in the works. I think sometime in the next couple of weeks. We had Mrs. Claus there in December, so parents and their kids could come and talk to Mrs. Santa Claus. So we're really working to vital, revitalize the North Park Library, and the CDB grant, CDBG grant is an important part of that, and so we appreciate the continued support for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Wall, members of the council. I'm Kep Taylor, representing the Construction Training Partnership, and want to thank you for your support in the past. It's a occupational training program for folks of limited means, and we try to impact their lives through the training, and we also work in the area of affordable housing. It's a tri-party deal with the city, the NC Housing Finance Agency, and the Home Builders' Association, and we appreciate being here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is George Hill, live 236 Highland Avenue, and my main reason for coming here today is that when I moved on Highland Avenue in 1987, it was a very nice neighborhood, and seemed like over the period of the last 27 years, the neighborhood had just been forgotten by the city. And when I say forgotten, I'm just talking about the disrepair, and we're talking about communities, and that's what I'm about, communities. And when I look at it and I see how bad it is, it's a shame. I look at the deterioration of the homes. I look at how people not following city ordinance. Anytime I can go around on a Sunday and look at 45 trash cans still being out on the street on Sunday when our trash day is on Friday, it makes me just sick to my stomach. I also look at deterioration of shopping centers, you know, and I know it's private property, but something has to be done about it. We want to stay in the community, shop in the community, but you can't even shop there because you have nothing to shop, go to. I mean, parking lots is in disrepair. We have a couple locations down on North Church Street with a two-car repair. They used to be car businesses. They have left. Be a good avenue for developing a business there, and I know it's hard to get private businesses to probably move over on this side of town, but how do you expect not to put any money into it and to keep this up? It's a shame, and after 27 years, I think the only way we get something down, you gotta call. I mean, we have no one coming from the city to check on and make sure that people keep a property. My concern is, when you move into a neighborhood, you invest 50, 60, 70, 100,000, and the people on both sides of you keep yards, your yards look like junk shop, and we allow, the city allow two junk cars in your yard. It's uncalled for, and that's all it does, is just take down property. Not only that, we allow boarding houses, and 99.9% of boarding houses and family care homes is located on the north Burlington, east Burlington. It's a shame. It's just a shame, and then the city doesn't have any way of telling me how many they have, you know. That's another shame. Why aren't these people responsible for the property? Because they're breaking in the money, but they're not responsible, and it's just time that we stop talking the game and put some money, action behind it, because we, you know, slums don't develop by themselves. City is part of it, you know. I have to call the sanitation department several times this year just to pick up my trash, because they just came through and missed it. I don't know how they missed it, but they missed it. But this is the kind of stuff. I try to, try to do my best, work with the city, do what I can, but it comes a time that the city has to take notice of this and help us out, and that's basically all I have to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
May I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Key business, item number four. City Council considered temporary closing Front Street from Spring Street to Lexington Avenue on April 20th, 2015 from 2:00 to 8:30 p.m. for the United Way fundraiser event, Taste of Alamance, conditional upon meeting all requirements of the city of Burlington's special events policy. This time we'd recognize two good friends, Ms. Newark and Ms. Thompson. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Wall. Council members, Mr. Huffman, nice to see you. Yes, United Way is going to plan, is planning a fundraiser, Taste of Alamance. We did that successfully on the streets of Burlington last year, had 550 participants, very well received by the community, so we're here again this year asking you again if we could close off that same section of street. The money that we raised there and that fundraiser supports over 30 nonprofits in our community, as well as 65,000 citizens across Alamance County through designated funds that people entrust in us, and then programs like 211 and voluntary income tax programs. We work a lot with the Project Homeless Connect and some other programs that United Way does. So we appreciate your entertaining this application. I want to commend the city staff, particularly Lisa Wolf and Renee and Peggy Reese for working with us to really get every T crossed and I dotted. It's a comprehensive application, but that is to the protection of everybody, and we appreciate the diligence that you had in creating that policy, and we hope too that when other nonprofits come to you, that maybe we can be a resource for them as well to help them, you know, to let them know how well we were received and how we were able to get through that process, so. Do you have anything to add?
I'm ready.
Questions for Ms. Newark or Ms. Thompson?
Sounds pretty exciting.
It is exciting. We hope you all come.
It is, very. Very. They do a great job. We appreciate what they did.
Mayor, will we approve the request on the conditions that they meet all of the city requirements for special events, on the special event policy?
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, City Council will consider partnership with Impact Alamance for the project to construct a splash park. This time we'd recognize Mr. Owen. Mr. Owen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you recall at the work session earlier this month, a presentation was made by members of Impact Alamance. Ms. Glazier is here, and Mr. Hornaday is here, and then the following night, you had requested some additional information from staff in reference to the matching part. As you recall, the Project Impact Alamance had offered $500,000 towards this project. You asked that we go back and determine what to, to make it a successful project, what it would take in terms of city investment, and I provided that information, and I believe it was $350,000, and also went in and provided projected operational costs. This would be a summer program, 18 weeks operations when it would be open, and so that's the information that was presented to you, and tonight we were here for further discussion. Mr. Mayor, you may, Ms. Glazier is here. She'd like to speak to this. Certainly something I've missed from Mr. Hornaday. Please feel free to do so.
And we appreciate it as well. Questions or comments for Mr. Owen?
Well, Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to approve it, but I'm gonna wanna go on record of saying that I still would like to see something on North Park in this vein. Not as small, not as large as that, but something in that vein, somewhere in the future. I mean, that'd be tomorrow, next year, the year after, but somewhere down the line, I'd like to see that, that water park at North Park. So I'll make the motion. Are you ready for a motion on? I'll make the motion that we approve the request.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Item number six, City Council will consider adopting a resolution providing the sale and insurance of the city of Burlington's general obligation refunding bond series 2015 in the amount of $4,470,000. Authorize the mayor, director of finance, and the city clerk to sign the financing documents and to approve Budget Amendment 2015-46, general obligation 2015 refunding series. This time we'd recognize Ms. Reese.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I don't know if you remember at our last meeting, you approved a motion for us to go to the LGC and ask for their approval of this debt refinancing. We are taking the interest rate down from over 4% to 1.05%, saving the city approximately $300,000 with the refinancing and partial paydown of this GO bond.
Questions for Ms. Reese?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the resolution and also approve the budget amendment to 2015-46.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Item seven, City Council will consider supporting a Governor's Crime Commission grant for investigations and prosecutions in matters of human trafficking. This time we'd recognize Police Chief Smythe. Chief, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here. How do I get this through? Thank you. You have to breathe with five slides, so we'll go relatively quickly, and then I'll call on our DA to just speak for a moment about this. So it's a human trafficking grant that's been worked on extensively by Detective Fenney who's here in the room, as well as the rest of the investigation staff that's here to express some support for this. Just wanted to go over very quickly, human trafficking, what is it? You know, these things have been around for a long, long time under a lot of different names, and in 2000 and subsequent to that, we've codified it in statute in a number of different ways to enhance sentencing and investigative capabilities. So human trafficking for any of the three purposes listed, labor services, commercial sex act for the use of force or fraud, or any commercial sex act if the person is under 18 years of age. We have investigated those in the past. We will continue to do so in the future. This grant allows us to do so with a little greater focus. National trends in 2014, 16,000-plus calls related to these kinds of investigations on the far side. 98 of those cases were reported in North Carolina. We're ranked 12th nationally, so there's no secret that we have a problem with this kind of issue, and so we're seeking this grant to provide some training and greater investigative focus. We are on the corridor of I-85 and I-40. That keeps us in the prime limelight of folks trafficking individuals, north and south, and east and west. We're looking for funds that will increase community awareness, patrol awareness, that's the average everyday officer, and then our criminal investigations division, their ability to have a higher level of education and expertise and time to investigate these cases in cooperation with the DA's office. This is a companion grant, so they've submitted a grant, and we're submitting a grant to create this kind of task force to better investigate these crimes, and we have had cases already in Alamance County, actually across the state, that we've been the lead investigation unit on, and we look for some successful conclusion of those cases in the near future. This grant allows us to obtain up to $100,000 per year for two years. You can see briefly some of the captured items that we looked to purchase with the You can see briefly some of the captured items that we look to purchase with the grant if we receive it. Grant does have a 25% match from us, but that won't require any new funds. We're able to point towards our existing victim advocate program, and that allows, or that accounts for that 25% match. So we have no new funds going towards this. We simply receive the $200,000 over the two years. In year three, there's no funding tail, no additional expenses to us. We're simply obligated to continue to investigate the cases that we already investigate, using the staff that we already use, but we benefit in the ways listed for that two-year period of the grant. Mr. Radowski, would you like to add to that?
Notice he was quick and to the point, too.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, council. The chief has said, has done a pretty good job of explaining this situation. I'll just add a little bit to it. This is a situation where we are working together. Human trafficking is a major problem. It is the second-largest crime in North Carolina. It's one that's been around, and I think the chief mentioned this, but forever, throughout our history, but it's only now getting the attention that it really deserves. And of course, it involves people from foreign lands being brought over here for sex or for work, but it also involves people in it who grew up in the state of North Carolina, cases that we may have used to prosecute as a regular prostitution case, but if you go behind that, you find out what's really going on, why that person is where they are, and oftentimes, it involves human trafficking. So this is an important issue. These are complicated cases. We do have cases here in Alamance County, and they're so complicated that they take education for law enforcement, for the district attorney's office. So not only in this grant will the law enforcement, BPD, and the district attorney's office be working together, but we'll also be getting education and training so that we're better able to prosecute and investigate these crimes. So that's, it's just really important, and we would really appreciate your support. As we write this grant, it is very competitive, but working together, I think we have a very, a much better chance of getting the grant, being successful at it. Thank you.
And I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Questions for Chief Smythe?
You're going to be working with some local agencies as well, I think, Crossroads and others?
Yes, we roll in a number of advocacy groups into a coalition and board that will meet regularly and drive some of the things that we do, so yeah, absolutely.
Other comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Next item, City Council will consider a change order number two, adding the cost for the 42-inch Hall River interceptor replacement phase 2A in the amount of $2,661,473 in 150 calendar days to the contract with Park Constructions of North Carolina Incorporated to approve budget amendment 2015-47. This time, we'd recognize Mr. Patterson.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
We didn't, we need an emotion on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was in a hurry. Imagine that.
I asked a question.
Yes, please. Please.
I'll move that we consider supporting the crime commission grant.
I would second that.
Great, thank you. Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Good. Well, I think I've already read item number eight, so we'll recognize Mr. Bob Patterson. Mr. Patterson, welcome.
I'm glad you're excited to pursue it.
Really wasn't mad, it was about finishing up.
I know, I understand. Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm here before you to give you a little brief update of where we've, of the work that we've completed on the 42-inch interceptor and some work that we'd like to do. On the map here, the green highlighted area is the portion of the line that's currently under contract with Park Construction, not quite 3,600 feet. They've been working since November installing the line, and if all goes well, they will be complete with that section by the end of this month. And I'll talk about the blue section in a moment, but I do have a few pictures of the construction of the first phase here. They began back in September clearing the easement. There's a picture on the left and another picture on the right of some of the equipment. They strung up their silt fence and tree protection fence to define the work area. Pipe delivery started coming in. This is a good picture of the size of the pipe. One tractor trailer has maybe eight sections of pipe, 42-inch diameter, 20-foot long. And the picture on the right is a picture of them unloading it out on the easement. As part of this project, we had to set up temporary bypass pumping because they're putting this line in while there's existing flow on the line. About half the city flows to this line, everything north and east of the railroad tracks. Railroad track, kind of ridge line, finds its way to this line. So the picture on the left, on the left-hand side, is that 42-inch pipe, they have that strung out ready for installation. On the right are two parallel temporary pipes that are connected to these, the pumping system. So each day, the contractor will turn the pumps on, block the flow so that they can pump around to the treatment plant, install some line, and then each night, they make a temporary connection on the line that they've installed, taking the existing pipe out and putting new pipe right back in place. And then they turn the flow loose at night. That's, they determined that that would be a good method for them to save money by not having to run the pumps 24 hours a day. The picture on the left, we had to cross under the flood wall at the treatment plant to tie into the existing treatment facility. This is just a picture. They had to install sheet piling because of the depth to protect the workers, and here's a section of the new pipe that had been installed. It's about 18-foot deep at that, at that point. This is just a couple shots of them sawing the line further upstream, new line and new manholes. So what I'm here today to ask you is to consider a change order to the contract, and this is, usually when we do change orders, it's for an item that has come up or been overlooked. This particular change order, there's a clause in the contract that allows us to extend the contract up to 100% of the value if the city's agreeable and if the contractor's agreeable. And that would be this blue section that we'd like to do. It's another about 3,500, 3,600 feet. Some comparison, the Phase 1 that's currently under construction, about 3,580 feet. This is all 42-inch diameter gravity sewer from the East Burlington Waste Water Treatment Plant upstream to about the Riverside Drive area. That was about $3 million. They're expected to be complete by the end of January. This Phase 2A, which would be the additional work, is about 3,558 feet, also 42-inch diameter, from picking up from Riverside Drive, going north and west along the river to just shore of the crossing of Service Creek, at an estimated cost of 2.6 million. If this is approved, they're expected to begin this spring and be complete by the fall. So here tonight, we're asked, I'm here to ask you to approve the budget amendment and the change order. And just to recap, the contract with Park Construction provides a provision to extend the contract up to 100% of the value with mutual agreement of the city and contractor. Park's construction prices for Phase 1 was very favorable to the city. The next lowest bidder was about $1.1 million higher for the same amount of work. Park has agreed to extend those unit prices for this Phase 2A if we agree. The contractor and the staff have worked well together. Sometimes you get a contractor and you don't want him back, but these guys have done good work and we have a good relationship. So at this point, I'd like to ask the council to approve the budget amendment 2015-47 in the amount of $2,661,473, and approve the change order two to the contract with Park to add that amount to the, dollar amount to the contract and extend the contract for 150 calendar days. I'd be glad to have, or answer any question.
Questions for Mr. Patterson?
After, after Phase 2A, what will be remaining to complete the entire project?
That would be this purple or magenta section. It's a little over 4,000 feet. That's currently under design by Ali Williams. Don't have a cost estimate yet, or ideally, we'd be, we'd work that in with our capital request for this upcoming 16, 17 budget. But we'll have to see what the estimate is. We could conceivably split that into two sections if we need to budgetize it.
Okay.
If we add this work, it would get us about 60% complete with the replacement.
Through the, through the replacement process that we have experienced so far, could we tell there was some jeopardy with what was in the ground currently as they've?
Yeah, the existing pipe was a corrugated metal pipe with an asphalt lining. In places, the lining had sloughed off, there were a few places where the pipe was no longer round, it was kind of concave. We had made some previous repairs on the line in different sections to head off some potentially disasters. It has definitely reached its lifetime.
Well, I know this is, we talk about this annually throughout the year, really, but certainly when we review the CAFRA, that's always a big issue, is the amount of infrastructure that we have in the ground, the age of it, and what we've got to do to replace it. And it's important, this is important work, and it looks like it's gone pretty smooth. I would, I would like to make a motion that we approve change order two and approve the budget amendment 2015-47 for the project.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Brings us to public comment. We have none at this point in time. City Council comments?
Mayor, I've got just one brief comment. You know, we sit here and look at spending $2 million for an item like this, and it really reflects back on the importance of a public-private partnership similar to what we looked at tonight with Impact and the Splash Park, and just how important that is. The amount of time and energy that their organization put forth to, and finances to be sure that this project was a stable and beneficial project for the entire city is extremely important. We look at budget items all the time, and sometimes it's difficult to be able to put your finger on the type of project that would impact the entire community and one that would be centrally located to do so. So that's, that's great work from you guys, and I greatly appreciate it.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to comment on that as well. You know, for this kind of news in the month of January is a really wonderful thing. It just excites me to think about having an opportunity like this in this community. I'm really grateful to Impact Alamance, for all of our citizens to have this chance for fun, moving around, just enjoying ourselves. It's a wonderful opportunity for us. Thank you.
Also, again, I'd like to welcome the Boy Scouts, Troop 117, and Scott Master Bates and the rest of your group there. We appreciate you being here tonight. Also, as I understand, we have some leadership of Alamance in attendance tonight, so welcome. Hopefully, you'll get your documents signed, and you can get credit for being here. Also, I would like to echo the same thoughts about the Impact Alamance. We appreciate it, Ms. Glazier and Mr. Hornaday, for helping our community, and we look forward to the implementation of this project. And if there's anything we can do to help, let us know that as well.
Mr. Mayor, if you could, just when the issue, Mr. Ward had asked a question earlier. As part of the preparation for the Splash Park, we did check with our liability insurance carrier, Allen Crouch, and this is, well, we go to our liability coverage, and there have been no additional cost, to our knowledge, for this, because this is not deemed to be a facility of significant water in terms of, I guess 18 inches or less, really, quite frankly. So that's good. Secondly, back to the outfall line, if you recall, for some of you guys were here, this was actually a stimulus project which we applied for with the federal money in 2009. Didn't get that, unfortunately, but if we can do what we did, what you guys did tonight, and it included next year's budget, that is a huge step, to get a major project done in terms of water and sewer. And a lot of that, I give you guys full credit for, because while rate increases are not good for a lot of many people, but it's something that has to be done and look for the potential of the cost of taking care of infrastructure. And it's something that has to be done over a period of time, so that's two really big projects. And then, Mr. Hornaday takes full credit for the, for the Impact Alamance, because it's 65 degrees today, is it not? So that's why it's 65 degrees today. That's right.
The reason that I say what I said, I appreciate you doing the park. We need it. But when you have a section of the city that's been deprived as long as East Burlington has, somebody has to step up and say, "We want it on our side of town." And that's what I did. But I voted to see that this happens. You know, some, the kids are going to use, they'll try to, they'll find a way to get there, but we have to understand that there's two sections, two, four sections of this city. It may be centrally located for some, but for some, it may not be. Yeah, I'm proud to have that in our city, but we've got to do it for all the citizens of Burlington. And this is a step toward doing that, but still, you need, we need to place these things strategically throughout the city.
Entertaining motion, adjourned?